I'm glad all of you could make it tonight. I appreciate everybody coming out and expressing themselves and and talking with us. This is not your normal city council. This is a town hall listening session. And I want to thank everybody for being here because I think it's really important. Before we get started with this, I'm going to ask if Brent Dodd-Gill would like to give the invocation. Thank you, Mayor. Father, we thank you for these moments in this challenging time that brings these people together. I pray you'd give them wisdom. I pray for our leaders as always that you would give them wisdom as they make decisions in the future. And we'll pray that all of this would be for peace in our community and even prosperity and blessing. Amen. And now I will hand this over to Brent Dodd-Gill to facilitate. And take it away, sir. All right, thank you. Yeah, I wear a couple hats tonight. I was scheduled to do the invocation for the city council meeting as one of the pastors, but for those who I haven't met, even the panelists, my name's Brent. I'm a longtime Estacadian and privileged to be a part of this time. And I think probably the main reason I was asked to facilitate so that those on the panel could actually listen and not have to facilitate the discussion because that's that's the main purpose or the goal tonight is to have good communication. So those on the panel can hear and then make good decisions moving ahead. I do appreciate everybody on the panel and our elected leaders. I appreciate you stepping in to to lead us through this time. So just to say it again, the goal of this, just so we're all clear, is to listen. We've provided this format so people could share thoughts and concerns, even ask questions to the panelists. All about this, the current situation, there's a lot going on, obviously, in our culture around racism and all that involved in that. So we want to have a good discussion. Actually read that a philosopher, Greek philosopher, many years ago said something very obvious, we have two ears and one mouth for a reason. That's so we'll listen more than we talk. And honestly, sometimes we all have a challenge doing that. So one more thing, this is not a decision making night. So the panelists, obviously, many are city councillors aren't here to make decisions on things tonight. There's a proverb that says when you answer or make decisions before listening, it's folly. So they want to listen well so that in the future, good decisions can be made both in the city and in our school district and even beyond. So real quickly, here's the format. So we all know where we're going. In just a moment, all the panelists will just take a moment and tell us who they are and what their role is. After the panelists introduce themselves, there's a few people that have signed up actually to make comments. And so we'll go through those people to begin with, and we have a list of those. And we're limiting those to five minutes, not because we want to limit input, but we want actually more input from more people. So please work hard to make your comments concise. And also, the question and answer function is available there in Zoom. And so we want to encourage you to go through this as you have questions that come up, type them in there. And then if it's directed to the city council or to some of the staff or Blackman's County Sheriff, or even the school district, we'll make sure that they're forwarded to them. And then those that are actually directed to the city or the answers will be posted on the city website as the city council is able to process or the city staff is able to process the questions. So at the end of the comments of those who have signed up, we're going to have, as time allows, other people, the rest of you that are listening in, to make comments. And so you can use a little raise the hand function there in Zoom, and we'll try to get to as many of those as we can as time allows. And then after that, we'll just go around to the panelists and any of the panelists that want to make a comment to conclude, please feel free to do so. I'll ask you also to be brief. It's not necessary to make a comment because I know really you're here to listen and let other people make comments, but you will have that opportunity at the end. And then I'll turn it back to the mayor to conclude the city council meeting. So that's where we're going right now. And again, I'm privileged to be a part of this. So we're going to start with introductions. I'll just say the first name of the panelist. Make sure you're not muted. And then just tell us any, tell us your name and your role within the city or whatever your role is, and then we'll take it from there. I'll start with Sean.
My name is Sean Drinkwine, and I'm the mayor of Estacada and one of the city council trying to make good decisions in our city. And that is my role. So thank you.
Katie?
I am Katie Dunn, Mayor, and I am the Estacada City Council President.
Justin?
Yes, I am Justin Gates, also city council.
Casey?
I'm Casey Spangler, also city council.
Jerry?
Jerry Tenbusch, also city council.
Denise Carey intended to be here, but she's a brand new grandma, and she hopes to be on the screen here a little bit later. So we're happy for Denise and her addition to role as grandma. Melanie?
Hi there, I'm Melanie Wagner. I'm the Assistant City Manager.
Taylor?
I'm Taylor Campy. I'm the city planner.
Kate?
I'm Kate Anderly. I'm representing the Estacada Stand Up Movement.
Ryan?
My name is Ryan Carpenter, and I proudly serve the Estacada School District as its superintendent.
And just one more comment concerning the school district. There's sometimes there is some confusion while the school district and the city work very closely together. They're two completely different entities. So Ryan Carpenter is accountable to the school board. They kind of run the school district and then the city council, just to make that clarification as you make comments. And then Lieutenant?
Tony Collys, I'm the Chief of Police.
All right. Thank you, all of you panelists for being present. We're just going to move right into those that signed up to make comments. And again, I'll encourage you to be concise as you can. If you can see Sadie's screen, there's a little timer that goes on and, you know, we're not going to like Yankee off the stage with a hook if you if you go over, but please, please be aware of your time. And we're going to start with Kate. And before Kate actually became a panelist, she was signed up to speak. So Kate, I'll just turn it over to you for the comments you'd like to make. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. So I moved to Estacada four years ago. I have some written words here, so that's why I'm looking down. I'll try to keep my eyes up as much as I can. My family and I sold our home and moved into an RV on a foreclosed property. We risked everything we had in our adult life to move to Estacada. And we love it here. We chose this place. I intend to spend the rest of my life here. And to me, when you love something, you're willing to have hard conversations and do the work to improve things. That's why I'm here tonight. In talking to my neighbors and other people around town, it seemed like a lot of people didn't understand why we were having a Black Lives Matter march in Estacada. It was in response to the mayor's comments on Facebook initially, but there's obviously a much bigger movement happening in the world. So I wanted to address why that was happening in Estacada. And I think the place to start with that is with some state history. In 1844, Oregon established a black exclusion law. By the time Oregon was made a state, those laws were ratified again in 1849 and 1857. From 1850 to 1860, the black population of California grew by 4,000 people. In Oregon, it grew by 75 people in the same time period. That's a 98% difference. In 1921, Oregon had the highest KKK membership per capita in the entire nation. In 1926, the exclusion laws were repealed, but they were repealed by a 62.5% vote, which means over 35% of Oregonians less than 100 years ago wanted to keep those laws in place. We didn't remove the racist language from our state constitution until 2002. And even at that time, 30% of voters opposed doing that. That leads us to today. Oregon has a black population of 2.2%. Nationally, the number is 13.4. Our neighbor in California has 6.5% black people, and Washington is 4.4. So we're half of the lowest number there. This is why we needed to have a march. And this is why we need to have marches in small towns all over the place. If we don't denounce this history, we will inherit it. We have to reject it visibly and vocally. It's important to the youth that are growing up in our community. It's important to people that want to visit our community and enjoy it. There's so much to do and the last time I spoke to the city council, I asked you all if you were aware of the reputation that our town has, and you all said yes. The reputation's kind of ugly, racist, backwards, unwelcoming, among other things I will not mention here. That's not my experience in Estacada, and it hurts my heart when I hear people say things like that about our town. I take a lot of pride in living here. I've made a lot of friends and I found a vibrant community. The reputation we have isn't good for kids growing up here. It isn't good for business, and it isn't good for tourism. And I think everybody on this call values all three of those things. I've talked to several people of color who don't live here that wouldn't feel comfortable coming here on their own. If we're all aware of this history and we're aware of our reputation, and if we love this place, we need to do the work to be clear about who we are. We need city leaders and church leaders to join us in saying that racism has no place here. I'm prepared to work for change, and I'm here to respectfully demand it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, Kate. Thanks for that history. That's good to know, maybe for some that was not known. So thank you for respecting the time as well and being well prepared. All right, the next is Steve. Steve, you want to make sure you unmute and then share your thoughts. Good to have you with us, Steve. Thank you. How are we doing, Steve?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Well, anyways, you know, I just wanted to share some feelings I had about when the email went out from the city in regards to the mayor's comments. And it really I just really felt that it was a disservice to the mayor. And I felt like, because I have a personal relationship with the mayor, not so much personal, but I have a community relationship. I've met him many times. We've talked about things. And it seems like over for many years. And I know the mayor personally. And I have every time I see the mayor, he's always talking about the city, what they're doing, what they're trying to do, what they're trying to help people. And they're trying to, he's like, he loves his town. And I, and I feel like if I looked up mayor, small community mayor, there would be Brent, I mean, not Brent, but Sean's face there. He loves his town. And I just feel like we should there should be some honor and commitment to people that we know, and we know their intent, you know, and regardless if he said something not quite the right way or something to that effect. And he's also a citizen that has a freedom of speech like anybody else. And I really feel that he got thrown under the bus by the city. And that instead of saying, you know, that he did say, he didn't say something quite right. He admitted he didn't say it right, but we know our mayor, we stand with our mayor. And it's just, you see it everywhere because of the movement and everybody's people getting fired everywhere for just saying something that somebody they say something a certain way about something, and they're losing their jobs and getting fired for people that have been committed to their communities for decades. I mean, the mayor's life is his example of service. And I think we owe and we should be people of honor and stand beside the people that have served us. You just don't throw people under the bus. I think it's wrong. It's not, I, it really disgusts me. And people should be ashamed of themselves that put that email out there. And they should, I mean, it's ridiculous. Everybody on this screen here, I think, knows the mayor and his commitment to this city. And just, I mean, it's ridiculous, the thought. I've told him, just stop apologizing. Ridiculous. So anyways, I guess that's really what's on my heart. You know, I feel like, you know, when somebody's in the trenches, you should get down there with him and help him out. You know, he I just wonder how many people came beside him and supported him. So anyways, that's all I got. I know it's a little bit negative and and whatnot, but it's just, it's been on my heart, and I just feel I wanted to make it a public statement.
Hey, thank you very much, Steve. I appreciate you sharing your thoughts. And I've had a number of conversations with the mayor as well, and I I think that the mayor would desire that this conversation not necessarily be about him, but about the community and what we can do moving ahead. But Steve, I appreciate your thoughts concerning the mayor and his service to the community. All right, we're going to move ahead. Brooklyn, I see that you're one of our attendees. I'm sorry you couldn't be here to comment, but I'm glad you're listening anyway. So we're going to move on to Alicia Hart. Ally, it's good to have you with us. Share with us what you're thinking. Good to see you.
Hi, nice to see you guys. So I know it's only five minutes, so I'm going to try and condense my thoughts down. I was just wondering, you know, the last protest that we had, there was a lot of negativity from the counter protesters. And I know some of you city council members attended that protest or witnessed to it. I was just wondering, you know, for those who didn't show up, what was your impression of what was going on? Because I know a lot of people online were saying that they didn't see it in the video, that people were spitting or using racial slurs, so therefore it didn't happen. I just wanted to know what your guys' impression was of it. And I encourage you next time to go to the protest and not necessarily make it about you or stand at the forefront. Nobody's expecting you to do that. But perhaps just walk and observe and just really see the division that is in our town and where we need to work together to bring them, bring our town back together. So that's a question I would like you to answer after I'm done. And I was just, I've been, I haven't stopped thinking about, you know, what's going on. I haven't stopped educating myself. I haven't stopped educating others, holding each other accountable, having uncomfortable conversations. And I still have a lot to learn. You know, I am white. We're all white. So we don't know what the people of color or need from us in our town. We can't make that decision for them. But I do have like a few ideas on where we could start. I know that Mary, you met with a lady named Libra, and she talked at the protest as well. She's a wonderful woman, and I watched a video of her the other day where she talked about experts. And basically, if, you know, if there was one doctor in our town, we would go to them to be the experts of our health issues. So we should be looking and seeking out the experts of this sort of situation, which is people of color who are educated on the movement and are educated on what they need from us. And I also thought, because we do have a very low people of color population, we are predominantly white. And so I would think that we would be important to seek out other city councils and just work with them and see what they're doing to have more diversity and racial equality in their towns and see what could help us. And I thought the way we could do also that is having a committee or a council person devoted to diversity and equality. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of Dr. Marquesha Smith. She's the Director for the City of Portland Office of Equity and Human Rights. And I want to suggest to all of you, she is having an online session about dismantling oppression in local government, and this is via Facebook. And she is a black woman, so she is definitely an expert on what we can do as a city to dismantle oppression and provide equality for our city. But definitely, you know, Kate talked about our reputation and, you know, we can have certain things to invite and encourage people of color or from, you know, different people to move to our town. But if there's that reputation, then nobody is going to want to come here. So one of the ways that I thought about the city encouraging diversity in business, because I'm a part of the Estacada Stand Up Movement, and we've been talking about different goals and what we want to see is maybe perhaps offering business grants for people of color. But of course, we need to fix that reputation first, and that means educating ourselves. It means putting out you know, public statements on what we feel our town represents and showing up to protests like these to make sure that people know our voices are being heard and what side we are on. So I definitely have a lot more to say, but I want to thank you guys for sitting and listening in for what I have to say. So, you know, I'm definitely a young person, but I'm the voice for our next generation, and I believe that we can have a future where, because I love this town and I want, I want the future to be bright for anybody who wants to come here. And I want the best for all of our citizens. So thank you.
Thanks, Ally. And what I really appreciate is you got down to some real practical next steps. Because that's what I think leadership is looking for is like, what, what can we do? Certainly, conversation is good. So you laid out a couple of practical steps that I think all of the city leaders are taking note of. So thank you, Ally, for being well prepared.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. Riva, it's good to see you anyway. Good to have you with us. Go ahead.
Can you guys see me?
No, we just see your name right now.
Oh, let's see.
Sometimes down on the bottom, there's a little video thing you have to turn on.
Yeah, oh, there it is. Okay, so I got a new computer and I, okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Riva Wortel, and I am I'm a member of the Art Back, which is the mural collective in town. And I grew up in Estacada. And I just, I wanted to share, when I found out this listening session was happening, I wanted to share with you an experience I had at Estacada High School. So I have some notes here, and I'll try to be succinct. So I'm the lead artist for the next mural project in Estacada. And this mural project is focused on the Latino community in Estacada. And so, and one of the, I see myself as not only the lead artist, but an ally and a supporter for the Latino community in Estacada. And so I've been doing, since I started this, this idea and this project, I've been doing outreach in the community, and I've been talking with the Latino faith community and Todos Juntos, which works at the schools. And I've also been working with the high school, and I've taught there before, and I've taught some art classes there. So and this project, the main statement that I wanted to make tonight for the purpose of this listening session is to just tell you a little bit of an experience I had at the high school. So I so when I taught there a few years ago, and some of you were interviewed for the project, it was an interview project. It was portraits and interviews. And I had the students asking, asking each other, and then also finding people in the community to ask this sort of the thesis principal question was, what is it like, what are the differences between growing up or living in a small town, America, versus living in big cities? So that was the guiding question. And so in order to teach interview technique and teach how to do that process, I interviewed each student. And so in the group of students I had, I had Latino students and I had white students. And what really struck me was that when I was interviewing each student, the differences between the white students and the Latino students. And what I walked away with from, from that interview process with them was that there were many Latino students that talked about microaggressions and a pattern or sort of undercurrent of racist experiences they had, but they, they didn't call it racist. But it was something that I could tell that they were trying to figure out what's happening to them. So in particular, some of the students talked about being perceived as an illegal immigrant when their family had lived in Estacada for a really long time and were illegal citizens. And being perceived in a negative light as not having potential or not having not being smart or intelligent, things like negative, things like that, that was coming up for them. And so I, I was really struck by that experience at the high school. And when I, one of the things, because it was an art class, is I started talking to the students about, well, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to interrupt that, that negative. I wanted to do something, you know, I wanted to react to it and talk to them about it. And so I said, you know, what would it, because I have a part of the Art Back, I was like, what would it be like if we had a mural in Estacada that represented your community, represented your family, represented your friends? What would that be like? Would that, would that do anything, you think, or would that, how would that affect you? And the students were really engaged and curious in this conversation that we had about the mural. But in particular, you know, one of the students that really just stayed with me for this time, and the reason I wanted to put all this energy into this project is that one of the students said that maybe a mural about us would mean that we mattered as much as the white people and the murals mattered. So, you know, that was her, that was just what she said. She said it very matter-of-factly. And so it struck me and it stayed with me. And so that's why, and then I went to the Art Back and I told them about this inspiration that I had to do this mural. And in particular, the murals in Estacada are beautiful and they're wonderful, and they represent a lot of different histories and different pockets in the community. But there is not a mural that represents the Latino community, which feels like a big gap in terms of representing the diversity in Estacada. So so I think what I wanted to say is that it feels to me that in terms of like concrete things that can be done in a small town like Estacada right now, this isn't, this mural project isn't a reaction to what's been happening recently. It's a, it's a something that's already been working, and I wanted to alert you all to it that we've been working on this. And the Art Back is working on it, the high school, Todos Juntos, the faith community, we're all coming together. And I hope this mural project is not only something for the Art Back to do to promote inclusivity and representation, which is something the Art Back needs to work on. It feels like, I hope it can potentially be a bridge and a way for this community and for all of you as leaders in the community to maybe come together. Because it feels to me that that's what this is about, like that to create a community table where people come together and start caring about each other, about each other in terms of your family and your friends and making those connections so that the divisions and the tensions that happen between us get smaller and potentially start to fade away because we care about each other's families and lives. And I think that happens all the time in this community in lots of different ways. And it just feels like there's more work that needs to be done, in particular with people of color in this community and, and in particular, the Latino community. So
Riva?
I'm done. Thank you so, thanks for listening.
Thank you for your work on that mural. I know there's some others that are going to talk about that a little bit later, and the murals are an amazing asset. And the murals are an amazing asset to this community. So, thank you, Riva.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Good, another real practical step there that's being done and I'm sure city leaders are taking note of that. So we're gonna turn over to Fred. Fred, have you, please be aware of that little clock up there by Sadie and um, take it away. If you want us to see you, you can.
Look video.
Do I do something? Okay, start video, is that it?
Yeah, we go.
Hi, um, uh, my name is, I'd like to thank everybody for having um this listening session. And Sean, I, I, I hope you don't think I'm gunning for you because I'm not, man. Um, but some of the things that I'm gonna say, um, your words brought out some emotion and not just for me, but others in the community. And um, I wish the best for you. Um, I hope that this is a, a time of growth for you. And I, anyhow, I mean, I, I, I love Estacada. Um, I saw a sign, a friend of mine actually made it, and it says, I love Estacada, I hate racism. And um, I have two children of color. My daughter's gonna be a freshman next year at Estacada High School. And to be honest with you, it scares the hell out of me, um, just because of the reputation that our town has had. Um, I'd like to start by reading something that I sent to the city about a week and a half ago. Um, I'm writing as a resident of Estacada. I do not live in city limits, but this town is my home. I am greatly saddened by the remarks made in a Facebook post by Mayor Drinkwine. I'm aware the mayor has made a public apology, but that is not enough. He needs to step down immediately. In his backpedaling apology, he did, he was trying to keep people safe. Several days after the incident, a rally held to support the Black Lives Movement. Due to people were emboldened and made threatening posts on threatening the lives of their fellow Estacada neighbor. Clackamas County Sheriff's Department was at the rally protecting the First Amendment of the peaceful protesters. As a peaceful group, um, many who were in their teens marched from the high school to the city hall. They were yelled at, called names, flipped off, sworn at, told to go home and spit upon. We're in the midst of a pan, pandemic and people were being spit on. Um, the ignorance about BLM shown by some in our community is disheartening. The mayor did not make these people ignorant, but he did empower them with his comments. There were around 20 people in the crowd who showed up to counter protest a civil rights issue, not a political issue, who were carrying rifles. Some of the rifles were assault style. Grown men and women who are so afraid of letting go of their own bigotry, biases and prejudice that they are willing to intimidate and threaten their fellow citizens. The mayor stated many times after his comment that he is not a racist, and this may be true. We need people of strong character who are not only willing to say they are not racist, but to be very clear and vocal that they are anti-racist. If the mayor wants to keep people safe, he needs to step down now. The people he unwittingly or not emboldened with their ignorance and firepower may very well cause harm in the next round. I read last night, the NAACP is planning to march from Portland to Estacada in protest of the mayor. If any people who came to counter protest a local march show up, imagine what might do. They showed no respect for their fellow Estacada neighbors. What might they do to a group of people from outside of our community? The embarrassment created by the mayor must be corrected. He needs to step down. I am pleased we have members of the city council who have spoken out against mayor's comments and have shown their support for BLM and not only word, but deed. We need more people who are willing to stand up for the ideals this country was supposedly founded on. I asked the mayor if he really cares about Estacada to step down before more harm is done in our community, respectfully, Fred. Um, since sending that to the city, I have had time to reflect. Since the mayor's initial post and the events that have subsequently unfolded, I am past the shock and anger created by his comments, but I am not past his comments. Mayor Drinkwine, I have, I've had strong words of criticism for you and have asked you to step down as mayor. I have felt your apology and actions to be disingenuous. If you really are concerned about the city and not your image, please tell me why you have not spoken out about the actions of some. It's a very simple question. You could have shown up at the march from the high school to the city hall as some on the council did. Had you shown up, your presence could have possibly made the situation a community building event and not the hateful display shown by many of the counter protesters to BLM. I told you at the city council meeting, the last one you guys had, that I would not ju, judge you by the comments you made on Facebook. We all make mistakes, but I will judge you on your actions since then or the lack thereof. So please tell me why you've not spoken out about the cowardly acts of a few people here in our community. The perception is not good. As we all know, perception has a way of becoming reality. Racism or the perception of racism will not only divide our community, but it is also bad for business. We need strong leaders who are willing to stand for the rights of all in our community. Estacada is chang, changing. Be a part of the solution or step aside. Thank you guys for your time and um, I do want to continue to be a part of this conversation. Um, I think it's an important one and um, Sean, reach out to me, man. I'd love to have a one-on-one with you.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Fred, for a well, well-written, well-written statement, I'm sure, then the letter and then your continuing comments. I appreciate that and I'm sure the mayor will be in touch with you and probably respond in a different way to your question as well. Hey, I see Carlos Romero there. He's the next. So Carlos, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you for being present. Make sure you unmute, okay?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so first, I want to say thank you for the opportunity uh to be able to speak. I am speaking in behalf of, of many Latino communities uh and members of the Estacada area. I've been in Estacada for seven years. Uh, I was um born and raised in Costa Rica. I moved in 2001 to Sandy and lived there for 11 years. And I moved uh here seven years ago. I live out in the country about 10 minutes from, from town. Um, and in the last weeks, I've been connecting with different uh Latino members, Latino uh uh adults and youth in our community. So what I'm going to share is not only my perspective, my experience of, but as well the others' experience here in the community. Uh, I work for Clackamas County Behavioral Health, so I have a professional uh job in the county. Uh, and as well, I live here in Estacada. Uh, so there is a mix of experience. I know it's going to be hard to capture uh in five minutes, everything that I have in my heart and everything that I have heard. And potentially, uh, it's going to be hard to be objective because five minutes is not enough. Um, I want to apologize ahead of time if there is any misunderstanding from any of you guys. Uh, as I speak to what I hear from my fellow Latino uh members in our community. So what I have is basically there are two kind of experiences. For some of them, uh, they have found Estacada to be a supportive, compassionate community uh that has a welcome den, that has a embrace den. They are families in Estacada that have been here for 25 years uh, or maybe more. And, and some of them stay here and continue to raise their kids here. So they are found as more rural towns similar to their small rural towns where they came from, whether Mexico, Guatemala or, or countries. So some of them told me, you know, this is, this is how we feel in Estacada. We feel that we belong here. Uh, some of them, uh, and myself, uh, claim that uh communities of faith have been instrumental in making them home. For many, uh, feel that we are in home and we live in the country. We can go fishing, we can go to the mountains. We feel like we are in our own town, just in a different country. Uh, part of what Riva was talking is the cultural, uh, the cultural and the arts groups who have been engaging them and doing the mural. For example, we, in Estacada, we are not being reactive to what was going on or what's going on socially. We start talking about the mural bug in December, January, February. We did meetings where we met with, with different community members. So we are not being reactive to what's going on outside here. We want to honor the Latino community. We want to expose and recognize uh the contributions of the Latino community in Estacada. Uh, and the great relationship that many of them, many of us have had here in Estacada. So that is kind of a, a, kind of a summary of what I hear from different people. As well, uh, you know, when I talk about what has been the more, the negative experience or, or the other side of the, the coin uh to speak, uh, some of them have been, uh, felt like at times they have been filled the, the value in their experience, um, dealing, for example, with uh, with banks, uh, with the school system. Uh, and I, again, that is their experience uh, uh, with business. Sometimes, uh, I know there was a conversation about a, a police officer who is no longer here, who in, in the view of the Latino community here in Estacada, that being longer than I am, uh, they were targeted by that, by that police officer. And it seemed like that person is no longer in this area, but they remember, they knew the name and they knew if this police officer were to come here or you see him around, you need to be careful. Uh, sometimes, uh, what they experience is uh challenges in accessing services and supports. For example, one parent told me, my kid was making fun of that school district and I didn't have anybody to go to discuss about, you know, how do we find a, a solution of this situation that they were calling names to him or to her. So again, uh, I know we only have five minutes and time is running, but what I see is a mixed experience. Uh, my experience have, has been similar as well. Uh, I've been questioned sometimes, oh, you, you have an education or, or you work for the county, what do you do? And then I have to explain because I think I want to echo what we were saying, was saying. Sometimes it is like because I have an accent or I have a color different than some of you guys. Uh, people think that we are in the same, we're getting encapsulated in the same. So there is a mix of great experiences and, and areas that need to be improved. Uh, my hope is that the residents of Estacada take time to listen, to learn from all, all our experiences. My truth is not better than your truth and your truth is not better than mine. We, we need to bring all of those experiences. We need to bring all our uh perspectives and stories together and create a dialogue, create opportunities to, to talk, to, to discuss what are the, what are the differences and what are the similar, similarities that we have as human beings. Um, I know there is a long road ahead of us and I, as a Latino member, uh, as you guys call me, people of color, because I believe everybody has color. Uh, I'm here, I'm here to be part of the solution. Please, you know who I am, you know how to find me. I work with, with the police all the time as a Clackamas County employee. I work with schools, I work with behavioral health, with mental health, with a faith community. I work with the city. I done some work with Sean and with other people in the past where we brought a lot of services and we exposed the city and the residents to what we have in the county. So I'm here, I'm here to serve you. I'm here to be part of the solution. But there is always, there's, there's always two sides of the coins. And I think we need to listen to our stories and to what others bring to the table. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Carlos. Thank you for your willingness to serve moving ahead. And I think that's gonna be a key that uh, all of us are taking the time to speak and that just need to take action moving ahead because it is indeed a long road that I think that will get us to where we need to be. All right, the, the last one that uh signed up to comment is Dennis. Uh, so Dennis, I, if you want us to see you, you can click on your video link there and we'll be able to see you. Unmute. There's, okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I think you can see me now.
Yeah, thanks, Dennis. Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Uh, I want to say without equivocation that all men and women are created equal. And the United States of America has spent a lot of innocent blood testifying to that fact and defending the premise in a horrific civil war and in wars all over the world to stop the encroachment of regimes who would overthrow freedom. And we've done that in the world and throughout our history as a country. I'm sick and tired of weak-minded, history-deficient individuals trying to undermine law and order in our community and in our nation. I make no apology for supporting the sheriff's department, the local police departments, the federal agents, marshals, border patrol, ICE, DEA, FBI and customs agents. At the same time, I have no time for law enforcement officers who abuse their power and their station. That is not acceptable, but it is extremely rare. I'm just going to quote here, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercises thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or of the right of the people to peaceably, peaceably assemble and petition the government for a redress of grievances." The First Amendment says nothing about violent assembly or toppling statues. It says that individuals can petition to have a statue removed. There is no legal right to deface or destroy public and private property or block traffic. The Supreme Court has said that the government may prohibit people from knowingly associating and assembling in groups that engage and promote illegal activities. This being said, we have a governor who has prohibited the free exercise of religion and at the same time maintained that liquor and marijuana outlets are essential services as if the coronavirus cannot be spread there. It's my opinion that peaceful protesters screaming slogans and assemblies that have morphed into violent exhibitions of lawlessness spread the virus much more uh quickly than parishioners sitting in a church. You might ask, what, what does this have to do with Estacada? Portland's a disaster. I watched a video of a peaceful protester, quote unquote, attacking a federal agent at the federal building in Portland with a hammer. We think, oh, well, that's Portland. If this criminal behavior is allowed in Portland, why not Estacada? When do we stay, stand up and say this is wrong? These criminal punks have no respect for Portland. They have no respect for Estacada. They have no respect for conservative nor liberal values. This is not an answer to racial problems. This is anarchy. I want to hear from every member of the city council and the mayor. I want it on record. Do you support defunding the police? Or do you support the concept of law and order for all, regardless of race, creed, religion or culture? I yield my time and I'll wait for your answers.
Thank you very much, Dennis. I appreciate that. And again, um, there'll be a a forum by which city council can respond to the questions. And if there's even some questions going into the question and answer format of Zoom, those will be responded to. Dennis, I see Danny there in the back. Thank you for, uh, thank you for being with us tonight. I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
All right. All right. Appreciate each one of those who did a great job sharing their comments, concerns, asking some good questions. We do have some more time. We have about half hour or so for more comments uh from those that are participating or the attendees. Um, and so as I'm looking at this, and this is where it could get a little fuzzy here as we try to respond to these. So it looks like um, Sadie, help me out if I, if you need to. Katinka, put her hand up. And so Katinka, you're gonna become a panelist and we can see you and you can comment. And please again, be aware of the time. Good to see you, Katinka. I haven't seen you for a while during these days. Need unmute?
Let me unmute myself and video.
You were there a minute.
Am I, am I not there?
You were there and then you went away again.
Then I went away.
Oh, the ocean.
On my back, I'm not.
But it.
There we are. So, sorry about the background. It's from my virtual book club. We read a We read a book about surfing. This is Tara Tora in Fiji. There's the surfer right behind me. I was a librarian. So I have a very quick thing. I just want to plant a seed. I know it is a contentious seed with lots of discussion. The cities of Beaverton, Tigard, Portland, Independence, Oregon City, and Salem, and all of Multnomah County have a ban on the carrying of long guns in their city and in that county. I would like for you all to think about that as an option for Estacada. Independence has a population of about 10,000 people. They're the closest to us. If you want, I can share their municipal code. I also have Portland's code, just for comparison. There are 20 states that don't allow open carry of long guns. I just feel that in this time where Fred commented on the tensions, the young woman, Ally, was that her name? Commented, Kate commented on this, and that we want to have Estacada presented as a welcoming, caring community to ourselves, to our citizens, to our children, and to others. And I feel that the presence of long guns in people dressed in camo is an offense to my personal safety and to the idea of community safety, child safety, just in general. So that's it. I just want you to think about the idea, I know it's a tough one, of just limiting of the carrying of long, loaded, they're loaded. That's the law in Oregon. They can be, they are loaded. I don't know if you all knew that. And, but, you know, concealed carry for handguns require permits. Open carry for handguns require permits. You do not need a permit to carry a loaded long gun in public. So that's my seed that I would like to plant in all of you to think about, about what the impact is on people who come to this town, people who live in this town, and have to see that when it is legislatively possible to avoid that kind of tension. So thank you all for doing this. I really appreciate this listening session. It's been important to me. And Mayor Drinkwine, I know you're in a tough spot. So, hi there.
Hi.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Good to see you again.
Yeah.
All right, we still have some more time. If there's some others that want to raise a hand. Sadie, I don't see others right now. Do you see some?
I don't.
Okay, we can pause for a little bit if you want to gather any thoughts or anything. Maybe it's all been well-stated by those that made comments. Yeah, John, I thought I saw your hand up a little bit earlier, and then it went away. So, John, we'll go ahead and have you, John. Again, you'll go up and you can participate. There you are. You're muted. You'll need to unmute. And if we want us to see you, you can, here we go.
Can you state his full name, please, too, for the record?
Yeah, sorry.
I could do.
Thanks, John. Go right ahead.
Okay. I just want to make a comment on the mayor. I know there's a lot of attacks on him. He's given an apology, and I think it was a serious apology. There's some people that just won't accept apologies, that they want more. But I would suggest that Mayor Drinkwine, you stay in office till November election, and let the voters decide whether they want you in there or not. So I just ask you to consider that and not step down at this time. Thank you for my time.
Hey, John, good to see you. Thank you for commenting. Appreciate it. All right, I don't see any others.
Can I say something really quick, just to respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead, Kate. Be brief, please.
Okay. You know, the reason that people are asking the mayor to step down is not because we don't accept his apology. It's because he has compromised his ability to lead by his statement. The apology doesn't erase the statement. So that's the issue. It's not a punishment because you didn't say sorry the right way. It's because of what happened that compromised your ability to lead this community. So, and then my final statement is that I intend to join that Zoom call with Marquesha Smith about dismantling oppression in local governments, and I would encourage everybody in our local government to do the same. I can email the link to Sadie to share with everybody.
Hey, Kate, is that the same thing that Ally was mentioning?
Yep.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, Kate, I'd be interested in joining that if you want to get that information to Sadie, so that we can all choose, choose whether we want to join it or not.
All right, here's what we're going to do. I want to save a little bit of time here as we move towards the end. All the panelists, you've done a great job just listening and taking in all these comments. And so we're just going to go through in the same order as we think of concluding this, just any final comments you'd like to make. Again, I'm going to ask you to be brief. There's a number of you there, so you each can't take five minutes, or our time will be shot, all right? So, and it's not necessary for you to make comments, because again, you were here to listen, and I think that's oftentimes the hardest thing to do, is just sit and listen and not make comments. So anyway, I'll just go that same order as we did the introductions. Mayor Drinkwine, any concluding comments?
You know, I think I'd rather save my comments and let everybody else have a chance to speak on behalf, because this is really involving me. And I think everybody needs to express themselves in any way they feel necessary at this point about my loyalty to the city, or what I did or didn't do, or how I express myself, or how I apologize. So I want to give everybody a chance to weigh in on that before I comment on anything, if I may.
That'll be fine. So are you wanting to comment later tonight, or just in another format? You'll respond to all of this?
I think by the look of how many people are still there to comment, it depends on how it ends.
Okay.
I think John should speak last.
Okay, Katie, I'm going to go with you next then, okay?
Okay. First, I want to thank Kate Anderly and absolutely everybody else, not only for falling in love with Estacada the way that the rest of us have, but also for helping change the moral direction of the reputation of our town. Really appreciate that from all of you, Kate Anderly especially. I appreciate everything that has been brought to the table today. I also want everyone to know that tomorrow, I personally have an appointment to accept a petition that I will be filing with the city that is actually in support of the mayor, not because of what he said, but because we really do have a mayor in place who loves Estacada. And I want to say that we, as city council representatives, we represent everybody. We represent the blacks, the whites, the Hispanics, which I appreciate, by the way. A large member, or a large number of the Hispanic group showing up today. I appreciate it. That being said, we represent everyone, including them and the people who showed up to the counter protest with long rifles. We represent everyone and their best interests. I appreciate everything that has been brought to the table today. I have taken extensive notes. I'm looking at them right now. It sounds like we have a lot of work to do in our community, and I appreciate all the voices that spoke up today. And I appreciate everyone who is going to continue this conversation in the near future. That being said, I think that there is a lot of support for our community, for our mayor, and for each other. And Carlos, or I'm sorry, Romero, you brought up some really great points about how the Hispanic community feels here in Estacada. That you feel like you belong here, that Estacada is supportive and welcoming. And if you look at the mural that's on the backside of High School Pharmacy that is in celebration of the Estacada Summer Celebration, there are a diverse number of people represented in that mural. And I think that that's where Estacada is heading. And I think that together, we can head there together.
All right.
There's a lot said, and I appreciate all of your perspectives, and they're all taken very seriously, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much, Katie. Indeed, it's a long road. And you need to go together. Appreciate it. Justin Gates.
Yes, I want to just thank again everybody that commented. I see that Shayla has a question, though. Do we want to go to her, or we pass that?
Let's just keep going right at this point, Justin, okay?
Okay, yep. Well, again, I appreciate everybody's comments. I have a lot of thoughts on this topic. It seems emotional. It seems like a lot could be said and should be said. Something that bothers me is being told that I have to support somebody. I don't believe in that, not at all. I think that, I think that support is something that is earned, and is something that you, you have to earn it, man. And I'm, I, like I said, I got a lot of feelings on this, but it could go really far. I wanted to, really quick, to answer Ally Hart's question about the walk. Not in full, but, you know, I was there, and I was at the back of the line. And what I seen was sad, right? The hatred of it all was sad. People yelling and cussing, both sides, realistically. I mean, I heard it both ways. I seen more of the counter protesters doing the cussing and the flipping off, but I seen also the protesters that got angry back too. And the sheer hate was sad to me, to be honest. That bothered me tremendously. But again, I appreciate everybody commenting and hearing others' thoughts. Hopefully, we can all move past this and learn from this. That's my thoughts.
Thank you, Justin. I appreciate it very much. Jerry?
Am I next? Okay. Well, my opinions are, have not been secret. I'm typically not the outspoken guy, but I really felt passionate. I was empowered by some statements that were made, and I really feel passionate about this particular cause. I was also at the, at the march. I was the very last person in line. I wanted to, you know, I wanted to see as much as I could here, as much as I could, but mainly, I just wanted to make sure everything was going well, and, you know, nobody... You know, I wanted to be able to see it all from, you know, from the back, so I could be where I was needed, even if I couldn't do anything about it. But I really appreciate everybody, everybody coming, listening, you know, coming and speaking. This is, like I said, my emotions have been really, really high, and I haven't slept very much in the last few weeks, just because I'm so passionate about this, this particular event, this particular cause. So, but thanks, everybody, for coming. I really appreciate all the hard work. And just very quickly, I just want to go back to a question that was, or a statement that was made earlier. The city did not bus roll Sean Drinkwine. The statement bus rolled the city, brought the city staff and the city council into, into something that we weren't a part of. We had absolutely no idea that this was happening. The statement was made, and that bus rolled the city, and the city staff did not deserve it, the city council did not deserve it. So no, the city did not bus roll Sean Drinkwine. And again, I can't support, you know, I will not support somebody because I'm told to, just like what Justin said. So, all right, I'm done. Off my soapbox. Thank you, guys.
Very appreciate you serving in city council. KC?
Um, there was the question about the parade. Unfortunately, well, fortunately for me, I'm getting my son on the weekends right now. So with COVID, I really don't want to put him into jeopardy, because he goes back to his mom. So that's not too fun. So I don't want to cause anything on that issue. I really appreciate everything everybody said today with the notes that I took on this, and some notes from some meetings that I've been able to have with other city officials and other local cities, and just other people, other leaders around. It's nice to be able to have something that I can go to the city manager, and hopefully come up with some ideas that we can bring back to the city, and back to everybody to show that we are here for progress and here for the right things. Also, I just want to remind everybody that city council is a big factor, or a majority vote. So even if someone has negative views and bad opinions, you just got to hope that all the rest of us, and have the faith that we're here to look out for the city, and that we have your best intentions. That's what you voted for us for. So even if one has the wrong mindset, the other ones will ensure that that type of decisions do not go forward in the city. Yeah.
Thank you, KC, and again, thank you for serving on city council. I know it takes a lot of effort. Melanie, Assistant City Manager, any comments you'd like to make as we wrap up?
I just want to say thank you to everybody for attending and sharing. I know it's a challenging topic, and it can be emotional, and something that really needs to be addressed, and we need to grow together on. And I think that there's so many people here that have, we have common ground. We just need to find that and move forward and use each other's strengths, because I know there's a lot of things that I have never even considered before. Just, that's how, that's the truth. And I'm glad that it's been brought to our attention, and that we can work as a community. And so just thank you, everybody, for participating and sticking with us.
Thank you.
Taylor? Any comment you'd like to make, Taylor, from your perspective in the city at all?
Yeah, thanks. I also really appreciate that we're having this conversation. I think it is an important start. But it's just a start, and there is a lot of, a lot more work that we, as a city, need to do in terms of addressing racial disparity, the ways our systems perpetuate it, and also in terms of facilitating better understanding across different groups within the community. And I also would just say again, and I think I'm echoing things that other people have brought up. A lot of people don't think that they're racist, don't want to be racist. They're not intentionally racist. But we are absolutely brought up and socialized in a system of racism. And so because of that, especially for white people, and I'm seeing a lot of white faces right now in this conversation, that work is going to be really uncomfortable. So I would just invite everyone to kind of intentionally prepare for that discomfort. So, thanks.
Thank you, Taylor. Good to see you. Kate, I know you made some comments earlier, but we're back to you. If you want to make any additional comments to wrap up, appreciate it.
Sure. I just want to acknowledge how divisive this topic is, and I don't think it needs to be. Like what Taylor said, I think, you know, all of us that have grown up in the, being white in this country, have things to unlearn and things to learn. And, you know, some people don't even want to acknowledge that much, and that's unfortunate. But the way we're going to solve this is coming together. Even if we have a hard time finding common ground, I think it's really important. I am not a church-going person, but I think the faith leaders in this town have a really awesome opportunity to kind of try to express how, what... the, you know, I, maybe Black Lives Matter isn't the right words to use because that makes people bristle or something, but to address racism, to address inequality with your congregations. I know there's only one church leader here right now, but I think that's a door into like, like bridging the gap in our community and bringing people together because I think a lot of the people that were counter protesters aren't against equality, but they're just scared by the general climate of what's happening in our country and the news reports and what's going on in Portland, which I agree is terrifying and awful. So I think, you know, we're trying to bring people in and not push people away. That's my, my final message is that we all need to work together. So thanks, everybody, for your time and thanks for listening to what I had to say too. And I would, I would join city council or try to, but I live outside of city limits. So that's something else I was just, I'll float on the table as maybe we could think about a city council spot for people that live outside of city limits as a representational thing.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, it's a state law thing, but there are others where we do have positions for people outside city limits. Would love to see you on those. And Kate, can you and I meet separately, privately?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like that.
Sounds good. I'll reach out. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Hey, thank you, Kate. And you're, you as well as some of the other people that make comments just recognize the difficulty of separating what we're seeing on our screens in Portland and what we hope will never come to Estacada. And I, and I just think that's unfortunate that we even have to make that distinction, but I just think that's one of the challenges we face right now that I think we can get over if we just do some good communication about what the intentions are in Estacada. So thank you again, Kate, for recognizing that, that challenge. All right, Mr. Carpenter, you're up if you'd like to make some comments.
Okay, thank you. I will be brief, but I want to echo in thanking those who clearly articulated their message this evening and it was great to hear some former Estacada alumni with such articulation and enthusiasm towards propelling their city, a place that they grew up, and just some other great people who do truly and authentically care about, about Estacada and the future of its community. I think in all of the, the statements, Estacada schools came up each and every time and that just shares and shows the magnitude of the role that schools play as we move forward together in, in the future of, of our trajectory as a community. We've made tremendous progress as an Estacada school district striving towards equity specifically when it comes to equal access for all. Right now, we're working hard on hiring employees of color to better match the demographic of the growing community of color that's moving in to the Estacada school district and we are aggressively working on immediately addressing hurtful speeches that we hear out in our hallways. And so we hope that it's our actions more than our words that will make a difference in the future as we move forward through this process. Really, we're here tonight, the school district is here tonight because we recognize that our school district and our community is at the heart of this. And I acknowledge that progress needs to occur in our community and our school district needs to take an active role to lead that progress. And so in conclusion, I just want to say that I notice that everybody is working hard to allude to, I think it was the opening argument or the opening speech about changing the perception of Estacada. And right now our community has tremendous momentum. And as Taylor alluded to, these are some of those creative tensions that exist as we progress our great city forward, as we meet and welcome new growth into our community. And so what I heard tonight leaves me with optimism about the future of this town and achieving what we all want it to become, which is a prosperous city that's welcoming to all. And we get to share the secret that we've been able to enjoy for the last decade of the greatness of Estacada. So thank you for this opportunity tonight.
Thank you, Ryan. Lieutenant, do you have any thoughts you'd like to share there from your, your squad car?
No, just thank you for, for your opinions and duly noted.
Thank you. Thank you for your service in our community and throughout Clackamas County. Sean, that brings us back to you. If you have any other comments you want to make and then I'd like to just share a thought and then turn it back over you to, to
Close up.
Close the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight and expressing themselves in the way they see my actions. My actions were out of line and I apologize for those actions. I meant my apology. A lot of you don't know my past or my history, but you judged me on that basis. I ask you to sit with me, find out who I am as a person and then judge me in the future. But on another note, I respect all you councils. You were voted in by the people for the people and that will always be your job. I don't ask anything of you that I wouldn't do myself. My mistake does not excuse me. But at the same time, I am all about the city of Estacada, where it's going, where it will be and what it will be in our future. And we are a team and we are working together. I'm working with each and every one of you. I haven't always included the team word, but I can tell you, I look at all of you as my family. And I trust the actions that you bring forward will be the ones that's best for this city. And I can't defend what I did, but to say I will be better and I will learn from my mistake. And that's all I have tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity I've had to participate in this. And I don't necessarily represent the faith community here in any official capacity, but Kate, I do agree with you that we, we have a large part in moving things ahead. And I do know that one of the churches in town has created a, I want to call it an event, but it's called a friendly conversation about racism that they've taken to some different churches that it's been really helpful to highlight the, the concern and the need and the need to progress. So that might be something for the city to consider if somehow that could become a little bit larger than just in the churches as well. I've heard the word together a lot tonight and I have a little sign in my office here that says, if you want to go far, you have to go together. If you want to go fast, you can go alone. And I think we all recognize that we have a long way to go. I've been in the city for about 40 years and there's been huge progress as far as the reputation of this community, huge progress. But there's huge progress that still needs to move ahead. And in this particular area, it's not one that we've tackled. But in my experience in Estacada, people come together and they tackle issues well. And I think this community is going to rise up and do that. So anything I can do moving ahead, I make myself available to the city and to the school as well to help in any way I can. All right. Thank you all for participating. Sean, this is back to you just to wrap up the official city council meeting, all right?
Okay, thank you. And to that note, I thank all of you for coming out tonight and all the wonderful questions that we've had and concerns. And I look forward to seeing everybody in the future and hopefully making lots of phone calls. I can talk to some of these people and and kind of go over some of these things. In that, I will now adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.